Hey Phil. Hey Phil.
Yes Frank.
Oh, you can hear me.
How are you?
Good. I guess I wasn't hearing anybody at all, so I figured my speaker wasn't working, but it does.
Yeah.
Hi Frank.
Hey, who's this?
Ray.
Oh, hey Ray. Wow, look at that picture of you. How do I get these touched up photos where I can actually lay down and sleep? And you just look at the still picture of me?
Hey Frank, you have to go to a cosmetician.
Cosmetician. They did. They gave me an estimate. I couldn't afford it. I got my tie on. You guys shame me into wearing my tie tonight.
Yeah, my first meeting, I was a little bit more relaxed, but everybody else was wearing a tie. I figured, you know what?
Yeah, I just noticed it. But when I stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, I got my butter fucos on.
I saw on the news this morning, one of the news reporters.
Yeah, I saw that too. He's in his shorts. He was in his underwear, I think. He had the tie on and then he was wearing his.
Yeah, he was kind of relaxed.
Yeah. Well, there's gotta be some good side of this.
Yeah.
And that would be one where you don't have to wear pants all the time.
That's what Tony said to me. He said, he wanted to come sit with me, you know, like we do in the auditorium.
Yeah.
But the speakers, what happens is they get too much backlash.
Yeah, yeah, because of the space. You mean you would actually sit at the chairman's? On the board itself in City Hall?
Yes.
Yeah. I think the mayor was, he was on the other day. I thought he was, it looked like he was in his office. Couple of people looked like they were in their office. You're home now, Phil, right?
No, I'm in Justin's office.
Oh, okay. So you are in City Hall. Okay.
Yeah. So Tony came out to be with us, excuse me, and he realized that the. That's not the proper term, but backlash. There's another term when two microphones are.
Feedback.
Feedback, data boy. He immediately heard the feedback, so he had to sit in the auditorium from where I am. Sometimes I have to close this door so that Ben's microphone doesn't.
Oh, really? Yeah. Well, none of us have ever worked with this before.
No, I know.
I'm starting to think if we got good at it, maybe we could do all our budget hearings. I mean, I know you got to meet, but. I mean, this is kind of rough, but we're getting better at it every meeting.
I didn't know you could bring your dog to the meeting.
Well, don't say I have Rocky is here. Last meeting.
Where's your dog, Frank?
He's here. The problem is if he comes up here, he can see the street out here, and if the FedEx guy or UPS goes by, he goes nuts.
Oh, okay.
Because his job is to protect us from UPS and the postal service guys. He hates, he barks at every delivery guy and people on skateboards.
Well, that's his job.
Yeah, and he's good. He's loud. He's a little dog, but he's very loud. Yeah. Well, this is my office, so I do my regular work from here all the time. So when I'm on the phone on business, I have to put Rocky downstairs.
Okay, I'm going to begin.
Yep.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2020, 2021 Board of Alderman Budget Deliberations. Today is April 29th, 2020, and we are continuing the remote meetings for the departmental presentation portion of the automatic budget process. As we begin, I wanted to take the opportunity to highlight a few guidelines to ensure business runs efficiently and that all statutory and administrative rules are followed. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act and Government Le Mans Executive Orders, this meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the City of Milford's website. If a member of the board would like to speak, please utilize the raise your hand feature via Zoom. Please do not speak over one another, and when you are not speaking, please keep your phones and computers on mute. After being recognized to speak, please state your name and address prior to making a statement. With that, will everyone please stand up wherever you are and join me as we pledge allegiance and salute our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, will you please take the role?
Alderman Beatty. Alderman Gaynor, here. Alderman Genitazio.
Here.
Alderman Golden. Alderman Grant.
Here.
Alderman Hardeman. Alderman Harla.
Here.
Alderman Parente. Alderman Frank Smith.
Here.
Alderman Winthrop Smith.
Here.
Alderman Sutton.
Here.
Alderman Tranquilly.
Here.
Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitally.
Here.
Alderman Willis.
Here.
I'm here too. Janet.
Okay, yep, I got you. Alderman Beatty, I didn't. She's not here. All right, 13 present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have 13 present. We do have a forum. I will entertain a motion to come out of recess.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to come out of recess. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, we're out of recess. At this point, the first department organization on our agenda is the Milford Police Department, Page 43, Chief Keith Mello. You are on. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. This is usually where I say it's nice to see everyone. Maybe next year. And I just want to say too, to Alderman Willis, since you can't see me and I'm in my home office, can I bring my wife in to see her cats? She loves cats. I thought I should get your permission before I do that.
Go right ahead.
But thank you for that. So I know I'll be brief. You asked, I was instructed to keep my remarks to three minutes and I'll certainly try to do that. And then take your questions. I just want to make just real brief comments. I mean, I think my responsibility, all our responsibilities for all our department heads is clear that we prepare a financial plan representing the minimum of what we need to run an effective operation, then articulate that plan to you. I've done that with the mayor. I've done that with the Board of Alderman, and I'll do that with you. And I think it's important that you hear my perspective and based upon my experience. And then my final responsibility is to is to carry out the operation with the amount of money that is approved. So let me just begin by, if you look at the budget, it's less, if you look at what came out of the finance board, it's less than it was last year, which is pretty remarkable with a lean budget, and I'm confident and can defend the fact that this has been a very lean budget. And I won't waste your time, or I won't spend the time explaining that unless you'd like me to. But from what I had asked for and what the Board of Finance Board recommended was nearly $900,000 less. What the finance board recommended from what the mayor had approved is approximately $337,000 less. I was aware that there would be cuts from the mayor's budget. The mayor had a conversation with me and I believe all the department heads. It explained to me that they were looking at, I believe it was a tax increase, and I believe it had something to do with the expected cost of healthcare that was going up, and I was asked to come up additional cuts of $250,000 to $300,000. So I gave him the $300,000. It was difficult. It really, it was, there were two choices and two choices only, in my view, and that was either cut personnel. And I had floated the idea of cutting the DARE program because personnel, 90% of this budget, like most of our budgets are personnel costs. There isn't a lot left over when you pay your bills and you maintain your systems, and we have very, very complex systems. Nobody in the city has the systems that. Oh boy, I don't want to say it that way. We have very complex systems within the police department. And the only other option was to cut cars, again, because it's our largest purchase item. We have to, there's things that we just have to have to function. And so that's how I came up with the $300,000, but when I look at the budget, I see a reduction of $336,000. And which is even more. And I also see, and I spoke to the finance director about this, I see cuts to a reduction in the regular wages. And I bring that up because if you notice my request for overtime with $750,000, that's still a very, very modest amount of overtime. When you look at departments of similar size and complexity, and I invite you to do that. And go on and look at departments, municipalities that are in financial distress, that are, you know, that have terrible bond ratings and a high mill rate, and look at those budgets, and you'll see, we're talking millions, millions more than what we spend when you compare apples to apples. And then you have others, like a Fairfield that is strong financially. But I think Milford actually is closer to there than it is to some of these other financially depressed communities. But most of these budgets are millions more. And so when we look at spending in 2018, 2019, almost 1.2 million in overtime, that's a real number. This year, this year that we're in right now, we won't spend as much. We're actually saving a lot of money right now in overtime with this pandemic because nobody's taking off. We're spending about a third each week than we would have normally spent, so we'll save quite a bit of money along those lines. But when I put in for $750,000, I didn't believe that that would quite be enough. But it would be pretty close, depending on the openings. Now, there are more openings now since I spoke with the mayor on this, and we anticipate more openings. So that number will probably be much higher. The $600,000 that came out of the finance board, I bring that up because we've known that's not enough. We know every year that's not enough. We couldn't fill our contractual obligations at $600,000. But we look for the surpluses, and the surplus has normally come out of regular wages because there's openings. And we know we have to at least hire contractually for 60%. Sometimes in the summer, we need more just to fulfill our responsibilities. But that number's been reduced by $90,000 by the finance board, and that was a surprise to me. And I looked into the wage table and I noticed that there were some reductions on the part of some personnel. And it makes sense, and I talked to the finance director, somebody retires, they retire top grade, and when you hire them, you hire them back at bottom step. So those reductions seem to make sense. However, I look at it that there's going to be X amount of surplus left in that account. And when I, not anticipating, because we haven't done that before, that I can recall. So having seen that in there, that $600,000 number now becomes about $500,000. It becomes more difficult to try to find those surpluses and try to, and so what it means is either I'm going to need more money at the end of the year, or more likely, because I work very, very hard to stay within the budget you give me, it's my responsibility. There were a number of things that we just won't buy here. And so I think, I just want you to know and be on record to say that it hasn't been enough. It wasn't enough. It's less than enough, and it's even less than that now because of the way we configured those payroll. On those payroll records, excuse me, on those wage tables. But with that, I just wanted to go on record and let you know, I hope that I'm not back in the spring. I try real hard not to do that. And I'll continue to do that again this year. And with that, I'd like to, I'll take any questions.
Is there any, Alderman, have any questions for the police department? Alderman Gaynor, you're on.
Good evening. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief Mello. How are you?
I'm fine. How are you? Good evening.
Good. During this time, obviously, the SROs haven't been on the front line at the schools. How have they been repurposed?
We've brought them back and utilized them to, we have one SRO that's that's sitting at the front entrance of Parsons at the desk, working the front desk there. And my understanding is you can enter the building based upon an appointment, on an appointment only, and she screens those people that come in. The other SROs are either fulfilling the patrol function. But we've done some things. We've utilized the fact that the call volume is down right now. There's some things that have gone up quite a bit. Stolen cars have gone up, car break-ins have gone up. And we're going to see robberies and burglaries go up as well because people are, they're having trouble paying their bills. Whenever we see that kind of situation, that's what occurs. But we're using them to do some outreach. We started a few programs. We're reading to kids every day, different ages, both live and making tapes where we can connect with kids. And we're working in partnership with Dr. Cattia and the school system. And so we're doing that. So we spent some time working on some projects like that, just to kind of let the community know we're out there and try to continue to engage. But other than that, they are working in patrol.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief Mello.
Good evening.
I got to tell you, Chief, I've never seen so many zeros on an account before. It seems like a lot of these line items are completely zeroed out. And I know that you've done your best for us, and we're truly grateful that you work within your budget. But one line item especially is a major concern of mine. And I would like you to share some background on it, is the police cruisers. I know you requested $350,000, and the mayor reduced it to $220,000. But then the Board of Finance, for some reason, maybe you can elaborate on this. I don't know if they shared this with you or they justified it. They just put a dollar in there as a placeholder. So that tells me, or leads me to believe that we're not investing in our fleet. And I know police cars obviously are the, you know, the most important thing as far as responding to an emergency, a crime, a situation that may occur. You know, I mean, without a police car, it sounds like we're going to be at a disadvantage. And even if we're running older police cars and we're not investing in the fleet like we, you know, always have done since I've been on the board, this is the first time that I've seen the police cars being absolutely eliminated. So if you can please take the time and help explain to the members of the board how this situation occurred.
Okay, certainly. Just a quick background on police cars. Police cars used to cost us about $16,000, $17,000. They're now $40,000. We used to put about $2,000 worth of equipment in there. That equipment now is $20,000. So a fully functional police car is $60,000. But let's just look at the $40,000 number. And it's a little bit more because we have to pay labor for a changeover. When I became chief, we used to get 10 cars minimum. Many years, we got 12. And we actually had then nine less, nine less police officers, if I recall. I'm sorry, seven less police officers back then. And up until about 2011, that continued. It continued under Chief Flaherty. It continued until about 2011. I believe 2011, we went down by one, and then we have funded probably around six cars. Sometimes we get a couple more on trades, but we fund about six cars. That number that I put there was for about five cars. I was hoping to get six. When I asked for $350,000, I thought we would get six. I've since learned that that wouldn't cover six, so it would have covered five and a half cars. Without any of the $20,000 changeover for labor and for equipment, and labor is expensive. There's a lot that goes into these cars. We've been, again, we're getting, we're funding less than half the cars that we used to fund. We stretch them out. Our replacement cycle is much greater, much longer than it is than it was in the past. So this year, when I asked for the $350,000, and the mayor had agreed to $220,000. And that was why I brought up, actually in the beginning, that he had asked me to eliminate another $250,000 to, I believe it was to make room for the potential anticipated, rather, cost of increase in healthcare. And there would be potentially a tax increase this year. So knowing that all the agencies were going to have to do that, I did my part. And again, I looked at personnel. I looked at, do we eliminate five people? Do we eliminate all our SROs? Difficult choice, because if you require lobby hard for their SRO program. But I thought that was better than taking police off, you know, people out of the field. So when we didn't do that, I had to find a way to come up with that. Let's a large dollar figure in a small capital improvement, capital outlay budget. Cars was the largest item there. You know, we have to train. We've got to buy certain equipment. We have to pay our bills. We have some very, very high maintenance costs on our radio combined police fire EMS radio system. Our CAD, our RMS computer system, those are large numbers, but we have to pay those, right? Those are insurance policies, our maintenance costs. In fact, we have to run the contract. There really wasn't much else I could do, so that's why I took that out of there to save $220,000. And then I had to come up with another $80,000 elsewhere, and that's why you'll see some of those numbers. And so that's the reason why that has been removed. But let me also say this, and if I could, I think this is important. I believe that this is the second time that this happened in the recent past. I can't recall the year that it happened. But when we realized that we're going to take a severe cut in cars or something like that, what we've done before is we stretch it out. So we extend the lifespan of the car. And we'll hold off putting new cars into the field instead of bringing them out. Traditionally, when the fiscal year started, we bought cars, we put them in the field right away, and we took the old ones out. We try now, we have been, to try to accommodate the reduction in cars. We try to stretch that out. But it's important about cars, and someone had asked me, and maybe someone is going to ask me this question, how many miles? You've asked this many times, actually, in budget hearings, how many miles on a first-line car? And I usually tell you the same. It's around, you know, between 30, 35, sometimes 40,000 first year. But these are cars that run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They basically are never turned off. They're a canine car. They're only off when the police officer's sleeping. And they're stop and go, stop and go. It's city traffic. It's quick speed, you know, quick starts and hard stops. They look like they have 100,000 miles on them. And what's important about a police car is they have these heavy-duty systems in there that the braking systems have to be able to work with all that hard stop and frequent stops. And the suspension system has to be intact. That's the reason why, you know, after three years, when you see 90,000 miles on a police car, that car should have been gone. You can't put that kind of miles on a police car. You can put it over in the detective bureau. So that's why replacement cycles are important. You keep it on the front line, then you put it on the second line, and then you put it third line, which is a lot of times goes over to the detective bureau. And then we trade them in so we can actually, you know, afford the car. So for instance, for the $220,000, that was going to give us four cars and a little bit left over. As we trade cars in, we probably would have wanted to put five cars out of that. We probably could have squeezed five. So that's the history of the cars.
Just to follow up through you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Mello, thank you for your explanation. But I feel uncomfortable with the fact that we're not, you know, at least reinvesting in a smaller quantity of cars. I mean, the fact of the matter remains that, you know, the finance board didn't give you any cars. And I, you know, I take exception to that. I understand, you know, that you were, you know, looking at this closely and you reduced the amount of cars that you have gotten in the past, and you're willing to cut back on purchasing, you know, less new cars. But, you know, I just think that's a very important, you know, tool to be mobile, to have the reliability without having to second guess or, you know, extend the fleet. I don't know. I just, I've never seen this before when it comes to police cars. I think that, you know, it's really something that should be a priority. And again, I don't want to see people lose their jobs. But I understand, you know, listening to you, that you have these tough decisions that you have to make. But did the Board of Finance give you any justification on why they cut that line item? Or was it something that they just did? Any, you know, without any sharing any of their concerns?
So as I mentioned, I removed these, and so I knew that there was a chance that it wouldn't be there. But to respond to your question, it wasn't discussed in the finance board. They didn't mention it. I thought maybe that they were, that this, I wasn't sure that this was still going to be cut. Until I received this budget. But no, it wasn't discussed at the finance board. It was discussed between myself and the mayor prior to the finance board. And I actually sent a document over with a $250,000, if I recall, a $250,000 reduction and a $300,000 reduction. So I had a Plan A and a Plan B to try to be responsive to the mayor's request to help provide some financial relief for this year's costs to the taxpayers. provide some financial relief for the, um, this year's costs to, to all the taxpayers.
And Mr. Chairman, just one more, uh, comment or question. So Chief, overall, uh, where you feel you're vulnerable within this budget? Would you say it's with, um, number one would be the, uh, the overtime account and, uh, the police cars?
Overtime, and I bring this up every year, um, and those that have been on the, the board a long time, probably tired of hearing me say this, but we, you know, we never, I, since I've been chief, we've never, um, um, funded the overtime at, at a true number. It, it's never been a true number. Um, and I always bring up other towns because I hope that, um, that some of you folks will go on there and look at, you know, the Fairfields, the Hamdens, the West Abens, the, the West Hartford's, you know, a lot of those places. And look at towns that are both financially healthy, like a Milford, and then those that are financially, uh, you know, depressed. Um, and, and you know what towns those are. And, and I think when you see that number, because it may look like a big number, but it's really not. And if you just do the numbers on the contractual obligations and just do the numbers on the things that we know, like holidays and overtime, before any critical incident happens, before any major investigation happens, um, you can see how, um, insufficient that number is. But we know that going in, there's always been surpluses, um, in the, um, in the regular wage account because a lot of overtime goes to hiring back positions for vacancies. So that, like this year, we didn't have any vacancies for quite a while. And because of this unfortunate circumstance, we find ourselves saying, we're saving a lot of money. So we won't spend as much overtime. Um, we're not hiring anyone right now, basically. And so, but next year we'll have openings. And so we'll hire people at contractual obligations, sixty percent of all vacancies at time and a half. Um, and so I just, we need to make sure there's a place that there are surpluses located somewhere in there. Otherwise that, uh, we're going to have to go outside the budget and look for money elsewhere in the city. And then the other thing, so there's a lot of things that we were going to do this year. We need to buy new handguns and things. I, I can buy those with, um, you know, I can get those. And, and so this doesn't, we don't fund half of the, um, equipment. We don't fund half of the uniforms, but we have other, uh, we can access other accounts to get that. The cruisers is another story. Um, so where this, um, this budget is most efficient with, uh, you're correct, and, uh, it is the cruisers. And, and I think it's so important that, and the reason I bring this up is, is my, again, my obligation to articulate what the department needs from my perspective. This, this can't be the start that, well, it certainly can, but I hope this isn't going to be the starting point for next year. I hope we're not going to look at it and say, our budget was thirteen point seven and therefore start from scratch there. Um, uh, you know, I hope we're going to make it up. Uh, you know, it'd be nice to say, look, we're not going to buy any cars this year, but we'll buy double next year. Um, and so, you know, I, I say that to get on the record so I can remind you next year. Um, but, but it seems like when you don't fund things, then you have to worry about how do you, you know, at some point you have to make it up. You don't have to, but at some point it seems logical.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Chief, I agree. You know, I, I would feel more comfortable, uh, purchasing, you know, a few cars this year rather than having to, um, you know, purchase more cars next year. And, uh, like you said, there's, there's also, uh, time re- restraints as far as upfitting a car. I know that that takes time and you got to transfer some of the equipment over. So to me, um, I, I just don't like it. It just doesn't sit well with me. Um, and I, I appreciate you going into great detail. And, um, you know, um, hopefully, um, you know, I will, I'll tell you that. I will remember, uh, next year, uh, that we had this conversation. You can, uh, count on me. So, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No further questions. Thank you.
Alderman, Win Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to preface this by saying this is right around my, my daughter's bedtime right now. So if you hear a baby in the background, it's just my little girl. So fun to, uh, get that out there. Um, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Chief Mello. Uh, good evening, Chief Mello.
Good evening.
So my Zoom software says that my internet is unstable. So I apologize if you've already talked about this or if you, if I, if I get these numbers incorrectly. But you had indicated that there is a, you cut three hundred thousand from your budget and there was an additional thirty thousand dollar cut. Is that right?
Without giving you the exact number, approximately, there was number thirty-six thousand approximately. Um, pretty close to that. I'd have to, I don't have my numbers in front of me, but, uh, if I could pull up a document that I had sent over to the mayor, uh, the two fifty and the three hundred thou- uh, three hundred thousand, uh, and, and I believe as I look at it, um, if you look at, if you go to the first page and you look at, uh, page, I don't, uh, I'm sorry, I have the old book. I still like the old book. I'm sorry. Um, but if you go to page forty-three and you look at the top, um, the department, uh, the mayor had, uh, recommended ten-five, almost ten-six for wages. And that was reduced by ninety thousand. Um, and, uh, uh, and, but it, but, but to be responsive to your question, uh, yeah, there was about a, approximately a hundred, thirty-six thousand dollars less than, um, three hundred. So, um, you know, our reduction's, it's pretty heavy. It's, it's a, it's quite a cut. Again, it's, it's nearly nine hundred thousand less than what I had requested. And, and I find it interesting because I went back and looked at budgets since I've been chief. And I do that before I meet with you every year. And I look at it every year on the, you know, to see where, where we are from what I request, what does the mayor request, what does the Board of Alderman approve, and, uh, who had Board of Finance, and finally the Board of Alderman. Because I don't like being nine, and it's, it's getting wider and then, and I, I don't like to see that. I, I used to be pretty close. I, I looked at a budget, um, during the, the, uh, one of the worst financial times we had in two thousand eight and two thousand nine. In two thousand eight, we were only a hundred and forty thousand dollars apart. In fact, that was a year that the police department, uh, uh, Scott, uh, had a, had a, even during the toughest times, um, realized, uh, a pretty significant, uh, increase or an increase. Uh, cruisers, we got two hundred and twenty-five. That, that year I requested two hundred and fifty. That two hundred and twenty-five actually, believe it or not, back then bought eleven cruisers. Um, and things have changed. So I, I try to be responsive to the times and the financial situation of the city, but we're pretty far apart. And we're getting further, unfortunately.
Thank you, Chief Mello. And out, out of the, uh, out of the money that you were required to look for to cut, are there any items that, that are being cut this year that you're going to have to come back next year and ask for, for more of the same equipment or vehicles or what have you? Is there something you're going to have to come back with, uh, next year or the year after and, and require a lot more of because you're not getting it this year?
I'd like to see cars, um, because, you know, we were, we've really pushed our cars out to the limit. And so next year I will, um, bring that up and remind you that we had zero cars this year and that, uh, uh, we should look at, you know, I guess the days of going back to ten, eleven, twelve cars are gone. Um, but are we really, do we want to be? I guess that's the better question. Do we want to be at a time for a police department our size and complexity to be at, you know, five and six cars? Is that enough? And, and do we want to be at zero? But how long do we want to do that? I'm going to manage with whatever, uh, I get. And if that's zero cars, then that's zero cars. But, but I will at least ask for those and try to, um, defend that next year.
Thank you for that. And, and just changing gears just a little bit. So I brought this up at the Capital Improvement Plan hearing as well as the bonding hearing, and that is for the building of a new police station. So I'm wondering if you have discussed the building of a new police station with any office or department this year? And if you have discussed that with any office or department this year, have they given you a timeline on when they think the new police station can be built?
I, uh, I don't believe I have talked to anyone other than, uh, um, maybe, uh, the building committee and had some, uh, informal discussions, um, regarding, uh, regarding the building that we're in now. Um, and really it's to the extent of how, how much do we want to put into the building we're in now. Um, but in terms of buying it, uh, or building it now, I've, uh, I've actually, um, kind of put that to bed until it's, you know, I've made my, um, argument for why we, what was wrong with our building, why I thought we should need a new building, uh, worked hard for many, many years. But I accept the fact that the city felt it wa- it was too expensive and, or it wasn't the right time. And, and, uh, I'll wait for the city, uh, to, it's their building. And if they approach me and say, I think it's time, then, you know, I'll gear up and we'll get it done. But, um, I've kind of, um, no, I haven't, I guess, uh, is to answer your question other than just for other reasons.
Okay. And I appreciate that. And yeah, I, I had asked for, um, certain, uh, dollar allotments from different areas or different projects during the Capital Improvement Plan hearing as well as the bonding to be put towards a new police station. So I'll be intently watching that for the years to come. Thank you, Chief Mello. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Harla.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Chief Mello. Good evening.
Good evening.
Chief, question for you in regards back to the cruisers and to some of Alderman Genitatio's points. Over the past ten years, there's been significant changes in the platforms of the cruisers going from a rear wheel drive Crown Victoria to a front wheel drive Taurus slash Explorer. Chief, what, what does the department see as far as durability, uh, longevity, breakdown issues? Are the new lighter cars causing more problems or the technology to our advantage as far as getting more life out of those cars?
Uh, and that's a good point. Um, there has been several platform changes. This year, there's been another one. Uh, that's the reason for the price of the cars. Uh, and whenever the cars change, we have to buy, uh, a containment system for six thousand dollars, the mounts, the light bars, all that stuff. Most of that stuff is new and that's, that's expensive. Um, but the cars have gotten better and, uh, and it can only speak anecdotally because we don't, um, handle the maintenance of the cars. I think that, uh, uh, the cars are durable. Um, it appears to me that that's improved over the Crown Victorias. Either that or Public Works has gotten a lot, you know, it's gotten, you know, better at, uh, keeping those, those cars, uh, on the line. I see, again, this is anecdotal, I see less, um, cars deadline than I recall from many years ago. And, uh, same time, I know that I also understand they're very expensive to fix because they're, they're, they're complex, just like the cars that we all drive. They're much different than before.
Okay. Thank you. And, and to support, uh, the point brought before, I'm, I'm, I'm all about, uh, I, I maintain a fleet on my day job. So I, I, I'm all about rolling stock and all about making sure that, that the fleet is kept up and that the fleet is, is replaced and maintained properly because it's a, it's a short-term gain for a long-term headache. So I support that, uh, we continue to, to replenish the fleet on a timely basis for that exact reason.
Yeah, so I, replacement cycles are extremely important in just about everything you do because if you don't, at some point you're leaving that, kicking that can down the road. Somebody's going to have to then only pay for that. It makes the financial sense, but I look at it also from, uh, a safety standpoint. Uh, and I just want to make sure that when we let, we put somebody in a piece of equipment that it is, is as safe as it can possibly be. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Alderman Gainer.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Chief Mello, I know last year you also spoke about your concern about the training dollars and how by comparison to other municipalities, how much less Milford is. Uh, if I'm reading this right, it doesn't look like it's much changed. Do you have, uh, what's your, your thought on the, the training and training allotment and the ability to effectively train the officers and keep them up to date in order to be safe?
Uh, and I thank you for that question. Uh, I think training is crucial and it is our foundation. As you probably know, I'm the chairman of the Police Officers Standards and Training Council. Haven't been appointed, uh, by Governor Malloy to, to chair that council. Um, and, uh, and so I'm heavily involved in training and, uh, um, I'm, I'm close to it. I, I, I believe in it. And if you don't, just turn on the news when something goes wrong and it always comes back to training or lack of training. And, uh, and so I continue to push training. I think our officers are very well trained. We have an excellent recruit academy. So they get a really good start. Uh, last year, uh, in eighteen, nineteen, rather, we spent a hundred and seventy thousand training people. Um, our training now is at one oh five. Uh, I, the mayor and the, and the finance board both gave me what I had asked for. It was a hundred and five. I know that we're going to spend more, but I think that that, uh, gives us, uh, you know, a, a, a good training program. But training is expensive. Uh, it's especially quality training. Uh, but I'm comfortable with what we have. Uh, the fact that we have our own training academy, we have now enhanced that to create in-service type training at a high quality, just like we did with the recruits. Uh, we're doing a lot and we'll continue to do a lot. So I think while, uh, we could, we'll spend more than one oh five, but I'm comfortable with where we are in terms of our training dollars right now.
Great. Thank you.
Alderman Bronte.
Thank you, Chairman. Through you. I'm wondering if maybe the mayor could, um, weigh in on this with the differential between what the mayor approved and the finance board disapproved in terms of the cruisers. Um, and they don't seem to have provided a rationale for that to the chief. Do you have any idea of that? And is that something we could learn about in terms of their, um, thinking? Thank you.
Uh, good evening, folks. Ben Blake. Uh, the, the chief did explain it. Uh, we went in February to all the different departments, early February, to all the different department heads and asked for additional reductions, given some of the cost drivers increases and wages, uh, the, the fact that the, the school requested increase was the largest and, and still even after the Board of Finance is still the largest in a couple decades. Uh, other cost drivers like, uh, workers' comp insurance increases and, um, things like that, uh, we were looking at a significant increase in the expenses side. So each of the departments did, um, make some adjustments. The, the, the chief did talk to you about a one-time, uh, reduction for the police cruisers. That was the recommendation. Uh, in association with that though, there was an adjustment to some of the wage items so that those open positions or those first-year positions, there was adjustment citywide across all the departments in addition to the adjustments like the reduction of the, uh, the police cruisers that the department, that the, the police department made. Um, there was an additional adjustment that the Board of Finance did request for some of the adjustments, which, um, I guess was on top of that. So there was probably, uh, somewhere between a thirty-five thousand dollars and eighty-five thousand dollar difference between, uh, what we thought would, the recommendations would be and, uh, what actually happened with the Board of Finance. But, but the, the police cruisers, to answer your question, was something that, uh, the chief and I discussed and, um, then presented to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance, uh, voted on those recommendations, uh, that again, it was a discussion between the police chief and myself to reduce it, acknowledging that it would be a, a one-year thing, uh, understanding the fact that there are some reserve accounts that different departments have, including the police department, uh, for which things like police cruisers can be purchased. In fact, there's reserve accounts that really specify that only, uh, police cars can be purchased out of it or equipment that does, um, support police, police cruisers like light bars and things like that.
Thank you for that. And then one more question through you, uh, Chairman. In terms of the other items of that thirty-six thousand dollars, for instance, I see crossing guards were reduced by, I think, five thousand dollars. Again, uh, any concerns you have that you'd like to, um, articulate about those that we should know about? And what do you anticipate, um, in terms of your PPE, um, kind of coverage right now? Are you good with that? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and I know the mayor was concerned about this as well, about the reduction that, uh, I made in crossing guards. And a hundred and twenty thousand, uh, represents what it would cost if every crossing guard came to work. And that's not the case. So we know when you look at historically what we've spent and you look at the eighteen, nineteen, we spent a hundred and, about a hundred and twelve. So looking at past history, I think the one fifteen is, uh, is fine. And if for some reason we do see, in fact, we're going to save money there because we're not paying them right now. Um, yeah, if we do see, if it's If we do see, if there's a $5,000 deficit, we can look again, we look towards surplus as another account, specifically the regular wage account to fund that. So I think we'll be okay. I'm sorry, did you ask, was your second part your question? Did I answer that correctly? Or, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Regarding PPE.
Yeah, PPE, I'm sorry. Well, that's interesting because every year I take out the PPE that we put in here. And I told you before, I thought it was, it was a high-priced item and it was to cover the chemical equipment. So it's under personal chemical protective equipment. And it was purchased during the time where after 9/11 and they had some anthrax issues. And so it was to allow us to go into an environment like that. We, when it came time to look for suits, we could have used that. Because the problem that we have in policing is, and you know, a doctor put it, I thought, really well. And he said, and I was, we were having a conversation and I was telling how much we appreciate what he does and how dangerous that can be and how they didn't expect to have to work in that environment. And he said, yeah, it's different now. It was different when they first started and they would get COVID positive patients and didn't realize. But now, when they deal with COVID positive patients, they're wearing full PPE. And he said to me, the difference with you folks is you don't know and you're not suited up because you don't know who you're dealing with. And so I agree with that to a point. And, you know, I still don't put us on the same plane as those in, you know, the first line of the healthcare field or paramedics. But nevertheless, we've had many situations, or excuse me, let me not use many. A number of situations, we've had to deal with people that either said they were positive, you know, spit at us or fight with us. And we also know that if we have someone that is COVID positive and is asymptomatic or mild to moderate symptoms, the hospital's not going to take him or her. We have to lock, and they have a bond for some sort of violent crime. We have to deal with that person. We have to put our hands on them. We may have to fight with them. We have to handcuff them, process them, fingerprint them, feed them, house them. And so we didn't, we could have used those suits. Who would have thought? So when it came time to have to cut, and I thought, you know, I don't want to have to give up something that I'm going to use and going to need for something that I, the probability was that I probably wouldn't need that. Well, we certainly could have used those. Now, having said that, the fire department was great. I called Chief Edo and I said, hey, we don't have any real PPE for these situations. And he sent over some hazmat suits, so we're good. And in terms of other PPE, our health director's amazing. And she made sure that we had adequate PPE. And she, and the entire city has just been amazing. We've all worked together to support each other. The fire department's been a strong, strong partner. Early on, when they had limited staff, they made sure that we had some staff. And then finally, if you, and I know the deputy chiefs on the phone listening, he'll get a kick out of this. I've always been germ averse, and so I've always kept a lot of PPE at the police department. We've always had a really good supply of masks and gloves and Purell. We've always had it at every, you know, entrance. And so we were pretty well equipped ourselves when this happened. And so, and we're doing fine. And we've had so many donations of PPE, so many. In fact, we turn them away a lot of times. We just send them over to the health department, the DPO, or we would send them to the hospital. So to answer your question, we are, we're doing great. We're fine. Thank you.
That's great to hear about our community. Thank you.
Alderman Beatty.
No, I am all set. Thank you. The mayor answered the questions.
Okay, very good. Any other aldermen have a question for the police department? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Chief, for your presentation and for your, and for all of the work that you do for the city of Milford. And thank your staff and all the men that are out in the streets, risking their lives on a regular basis to keep us all safe. I want to thank them. Make sure you thank them for me and for the board.
Yes, I sure will. I'll pass it on to everyone. And thank you for saying that. And everyone, have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman? Chief Mello?
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I do have one last question. Chief Mello, I'm just looking for a little clarification. Mayor Blake mentioned reserved accounts, that the police department has reserved accounts. Can you just please explain to me what a reserved account is used for? And how does a reserved account, how is that funded?
Sure. So there's a couple of different accounts. There's the federal seized asset account, and that money is seized normally on drug cases. That has specific uses. It's audited. It can only be used for certain things, strictly of a law enforcement purpose, is mainly law enforcement investigations. There's also the private duty account. Now, it's interesting because when I sat down with the mayor, and I don't even think I had this conversation with the mayor, but I had it with Peter, our finance director. And it's tough to tell how much is in there because, well, it looks like there's a lot of surplus. And then I had called Peter and I think we were $79,000 in the hole. And we were looking for money because they have to pay out on that. They pay their regular wages. There is so much that we do. That's what keeps the operation going because it's budget. Again, if you want to, it's not going to, you know, we have to buy equipment. We spend, we budget for half. The other half comes out of private duty. And those are officers that work private duty. There's a surcharge that's charged to the vendor. Money comes back to pay for workman's comp and training and equipment. If you assume that they're working, say, 15% of their time, they work private duty, then that equal portion should come back to the city. The taxpayers shouldn't have to fund that portion of the officer's time. But we buy out of those accounts. And what I failed to mention is we used to have a vehicle acquisition account. We used to get two to three cars a year. We don't use that anymore. Rarely, once in a while, but rarely do we use that because we can buy, that's what we buy, detective cars, admin cars, specialty cars, motorcycles. We just spent $80,000, say, $6,000 to, our command van needed upgraded. We had to buy a motorcycle. We buy all of our uniforms, most of our uniforms. We buy equipment. That's how we've got Bertra. That's how we get any type of equipment for the SWAT team. That's how, when we had to buy the drone. If most everything that you see at that police department that was purchased, including handguns and rifles, the majority of that $20,000 per car, that comes out of those, that private duty surcharge fund. We do a lot of training. We just had to do a software upgrade for, I think it was $42,000. And we use that money off of those accounts. So we're funding the operation. We went to, we need to buy guns. Our guns, many of them are falling apart, literally falling apart when you shoot. We've had them when people have shot, fired those in training, literally falling apart. We're ready to buy those. Shortly after my budget hearing, when we looked into the account, we were, and Peter may recall this, we were $79,000 in the red. So I'm waiting to make sure there's an adequate replenishment in that account so we can go buy new pistols for everyone. And so, and then because when you do that, you've got to now train on a whole different system. And it's a very, very expensive changeover. It's something that's usually done in about seven to 10 years. And we're on the outside of that. So that's what we do with those. We buy all the strobe lights for the cars. Come out of those accounts. So that helps fund the operation. And so that's what we do with those. I'm trying to think. And from some special training that comes out of those, those are the accounts he's referring to.
Okay, and just one more follow-up question through you, Mr. Chairman. And those purchases, is that at your discretion as far as what needs to be purchased through those accounts?
Yes, it goes through the normal purchasing requirement. And normally, what happens is there isn't enough money or any money in the account, and so we'll take it out of there. And then that gets a purchase request, goes to finance. And as long as it applies, portable radios, we're still trying to get portable radios for everyone. Those are very expensive, but every year we buy a couple radios out of that. So they're normal purchases. It goes through the same process as anything else. This year, well, we won't make as much on that because we're not, there's no private duty right now. And for five weeks, there hasn't been. And I don't anticipate that that private duty is coming back. Construction jobs will be there, but some of these other jobs that officers work at the mall and fairs and bars, I don't anticipate those coming back. So I think we'll see a lot less money going into that account in the future, or near future, I should say.
Okay, Chief, thank you. I appreciate the answers and all the best to you and your department. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Chief. You have a good evening. Stay safe.
Same to you. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night. At this point, the next department organization on our agenda is Animal Control, page 59. Mr. Scott Ellingson. Good evening, Scott.
Good, good evening. I'm Scott Ellingson. I'm the head of Animal Control for Milford. And we also represent Orange. As you'll notice by the budget, I'm keeping everything the same as last year and ready for any questions.
Is there any aldermen out there that would like to ask any questions pertaining to the animal control? I see no questions for the animal control. We'll move on to the next department organization on our agenda, with the Milford Arts Council. Thank you, Scott, for your presence.
Okay, thank you.
Milford Arts Council, Paige. Mignolet, you're on. Good evening. Paige, I think you're on mute.
Nope, I think I just unmuted myself. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
The Arts Council is keeping our requests from the city the same at 70,000. Right now, we are looking at a $40,000 loss of income based on canceled events and revenue streams. We are at a holding pattern right now with Summer Camp, which Pantagino Productions runs for us. And we are doing as much programming as we can virtually, online, on Facebook, YouTube, et cetera. Continue to have kind of think tanks and brainstorming sessions as much as possible. Last night, I had a meeting with our committee to review the public art project grant that we received through the state last September for the Meet Me at the Bench project, which I believe I presented to you all. That is for six public art installations, redesigning the park bench as an artistic community experience. We received eight designs. They were all varied, falling within budget projection for each submission between 2,000 and 5,500. The committee felt very strongly that all eight benches, with some adjustments, that they want to find funding for all eight of them. The DECD allowed us to expand our schedule for the project. Originally, installations were going to be done and the project finished with an end report for October of 2020. And we requested a nine-month extension for installations for next spring. Our hope and feeling is actually one of excitement that this project, although it was created to involve community development and become an economic driver for the city, that with this pandemic, this project actually has much more impact and potential for the community at large. So the committee felt very, very strongly about it. So we're going to be looking into our funding objects for that. Let's see, I don't know, I guess the best thing to be would be to ask if there is any questions.
Thank you, Paige. Is there any aldermen that have any questions pertaining to Milford Arts Council? I don't see any, Paige.
Okay, if I can add just one more comment, and that is, I think that we would like to be able to have an audience at some point in time, sooner than later, for planning with the city for the possibility of alternate spaces, both inside and out, where we might be able to provide some programming, either free or for ticketing and revenue. The MAC, if you've been there at all, you understand that the brand is one of intimacy and based on social gathering. And even with 50% capacity, our space would be very, very tight and confined. So that is an option that we would like to be able to discuss in the near future.
Thank you, Paige, and thank you for your presentation. Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Director Mignolet. Paige, the Milford Arts Council, again, has done a phenomenal job in our city. Every year, I marvel at the work that you do with the, with the resources you have available to you. It's a most professional organization and one of the great art councils in the state, I would venture to say. A couple of things you mentioned, the arts, both the fine arts, the performing arts, are a community type of endeavor. And in this completely unique environment we're in now and the pandemic, which has presented so many challenges, I noticed being creative people, like with Open Mic Night, I think it was last week or the week before, you find ways to make the best of the teleconferencing and other creative ways to join people together. And I applaud that. But it is going to be fewer people coming to fewer events, at least hopefully not too long a time. Some of the other things you mentioned, for instance, I always ask every year about the Firehouse Gallery down here in the West Shore area. What is the current status on that, Paige? I know you were looking for new resident artists there. Obviously, there isn't a lot of programming going on there. But what's the status of the Firehouse? And what plans might you have going into the latter part of this year?
Okay, so the Firehouse Gallery, our tenant is moving out this weekend. We put out a call for applications and there seemed to be a lot of buzz around it, but we only received one candidate who actually is a dear volunteer with us. He is a framer by trade and artist by design. And he is looking for a space where he can focus more of his energies on his artwork and push the framing business a little bit off to the side. My thought is that he may offer some classes in framing, mounting and presenting art, which I think would be extremely valuable to our local artists. We've also been talking to Brian Smith about renting a section of the upstairs that is used right now for storage to utilize or to rent from us to run his blog and interviews out of, which I think will bring a lot of nice energy to the Walnut Beach area. Brian has always been very, very supportive of all the events and the businesses down there. One of the benches of the eight designs, the committee feels very strongly that it's casual design, that it would be very appropriate for either Walnut Beach or Woodmont. So we might be reaching out to those communities as well. The gallery space itself is, again, another small intimate space. We had been doing figure drawing there twice a week or twice a month. And our written word was meeting there twice a month as well. Written word has now gone on Zoom and they have grown, almost doubled in number. They actually have people who attend from across the country for their writers group. And they're now meeting every single Wednesday night at 7:00 PM. We put up our photo expo, which we do in partnership with the Milford Photo. And instead of a couple of hundred people coming to see that show, we had over 2,500 visitors on our website. So we're kind of looking for different ways to expand there. I think small classes is probably going to be our focus moving forward with a couple of smaller exhibits. is probably going to be our focus moving forward with a couple of smaller exhibits set up kind of quarterly throughout the year. Additionally, just from our programming that has gone online, tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM, Eastbound is producing their very first homebound with Eastbound, with a little 10-minute, one-act play with three actors directed by Nancy Herman. We've been doing tap classes online. Nia has gone online. So it's just a little bit of, of everything open mic that you mentioned. We're going to try it a little differently this month. I think it's going to be in two weeks. We're going to do it via a watch party on Facebook where attendees can actually either enter through the MAC Facebook page and watch everybody's performances or bounce from performance Facebook page to Facebook page as kind of a progressive open mic, like the old progressive dinners. So we've got a lot of irons in the fire, so to speak, and to the point of our professionalism as an organization and respect throughout the greater community, we have actually been contacted by a number of arts organizations, most recently from Stratford and Hampden and the Shoreline Arts Council up in Guilford-Branford area to discuss how we work, how closely we work with our municipality and what support we get and what involvement we have in the larger picture of community and economic development. So that's been kind of very reassuring for all the work, hard work that we do. And yeah, we've, we're just keeping very busy. I think we're busier now than we ever have been in many ways.
Thank you, Paige. By the way, I was a contributor to the open, last open mic. I got in as the last act of the program, so I was very gratified with that. I did it.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Well, you had to see it. It probably wouldn't have been so worthy of congratulations, but I did it. So. Thank you so much, Paige. Appreciate all you do.
I think we're all, yep, I think we're all embracing the arts right now. The arts are getting a lot of people through.
Yeah, it really is. I see, you know, you're, you're stuck at home and you start, you know, my wife's been sewing masks with all these different fabrics and stuff, things that you wouldn't do, you know, working on different artistic endeavors because you, that solitude can sometimes be inspirational. But you are for, for us here in Milford, and the MAC has done a wonderful job again this year as always, and I appreciate the service you provide to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chairman.
You're welcome. Alderman Beatty. I think you're on mute, Alderman Beatty.
On mute. Okay, can you hear me? Thank you. To Paige, thank you. You're always so good at thinking on your feet, and there isn't anybody on this entire board who doesn't appreciate what you do. But I was struck with the conversation we had about the benches and that project, thinking post-COVID. We're all trying to think of what the municipalities, organizations, boards are going to do post-COVID, and you seem to be ahead of yourself and other places with this bench project that you were funded for. So I wonder if you'd talk a little bit more about that. We're all planning to gather in external places, and that would be a way to enhance, I see the connection you do, with the economic development, the Chamber of Commerce, and the MAC to expand that project. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. Thank you very much, Ellen. The bench project was to, as I said, develop a sense of community and neighborhood in the downtown area with a lot of the TOD developments. People no longer live downtown, a lot of people no longer live downtown with a front stoop. And even the neighborhoods with front stoops aren't as neighborly as perhaps they used to be in generations past. We have so many beautiful little tranquil spots in downtown that people don't even realize are available and accessible to the public. So we wanted to highlight those areas and create a walking trail, an art trail, with these bench projects that would be scattered throughout downtown, on the Green, by the Historical Society, Lisbon Landing, the Upper Duck Pond, where the new ADA sidewalks were installed, the Little Triangle Park, looking down the Webewawak River across the street from the Kissing Bridge and the waterfall. The benches themselves, the designs are all very, very different. One was designed to replicate the cop on a can with the bench surrounding it, and the can will actually open up and people will be able to step inside and pretend that they're the cop in the bucket. Another bench is steel and wood, and the steel form the rudder of a boat. The bench seat is wood, and then the back of the bench is a steel sail behind it. Another bench are, it's called community blocks, and they are different species of wood and reclaimed pallet wood that have old paint on it. So it speaks to the color and diversity of our community, and the blocks will be stacked in a manner to, for families and children to climb on, sit on, have pictures in front of, et cetera. Another one is called face-to-face, where it is a circle that is then spliced up like a pie into four sections, and each section, there is a mask cut out of the back of it. So you can peer through the mask. They look like old theatrical masks, and then above it will be quotes from various authors, inspirational quotes. Another, another one is a cement mermaid with embedded glass beads and sea glass. That's the one that the committee felt would be more appropriate along the beach communities of Woodmont or Walnut Beach. So anyway, these benches are all very, very different. They all speak to a different way of experiencing the bench, and our hope is that these sites will then become small gathering areas for impromptu concerts, poetry readings, read-alongs behind the library, places where people may meet and become engaged at, people, family members may meet and strangers may meet and become new friends. So it really is kind of a unique opportunity for this entire community to get behind and to really celebrate that. A lot of municipalities are probably wanting to do projects like that, but in this point in time, don't have the funding. The fact that we were awarded the funding beforehand puts us in a very, very opportunistic spot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alderman Gaynor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Paige, I want to thank you and your team at the MAC for all the work that you guys do. And there, there is a difference there. It's not just, the MAC doesn't just provide an opportunity to enjoy the arts. You, you have a knack of bringing the arts to and into the community, which is, I think, just so critical for, for the community at large. It has been for, for years now, but I can only imagine that as we go forward and the world opens back up, that'll be even that much more critical. So looking forward to seeing the benches and all that you guys provide. So thank you and the team.
Thank you very much.
Any more questions from the aldermen for the Milford Arts Council? Marty Hartman.
I am here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have any questions for the Milford Arts Council?
No, I don't. I just want to let you know that I've, I've been here since the, the beginning, and this is the first time I've gotten through. I'm sorry.
Oh, very well. Good to see you onboard. Alderman Winsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Good evening, Paige. As you know, I've, I've been to the Milford Arts Council several times, and I really want to commend you and your Milford Arts Council team over there and everything that you guys do for the individuals, for the groups, for the artists across just a multitude of different platforms. Everything, you know, you offer at the Milford Arts Council is tremendous. The, the other items or things that you may need, it's either funding for or something of that nature that you, that you had indicated you may need to come in front of the Board of Alderan for. Can you just expand on that a little bit?
I don't know if it was coming in front of the alderman as much as it was coming before the city, mayor, Public Works, Parks and Rec, about perhaps looking at the possibility of alternate spaces for us to use in the interim. I don't know if we'll be able to use our venue at the start of September or perhaps after the new year or not until spring. But I know that I've had an email exchange with the mayor about wanting to sit down with himself and Deepa from the Health Department at some point in time and kind of talk this through. But I, I would like to talk about alternate spaces sooner than later, just for a planning sake, understanding that implementation may be way down the road. As far as funding goes, if our sponsors stick by us and we can get some other, other sponsorships and restrict portions of their gift towards sponsoring the benches and can kind of grow that support, that is our goal. We managed, our board was fantastic and managed to have a fundraiser squeaked it in at March 5th, which brought in a nice little package of money that I think is going to bring us through to the end of our fiscal, June 30th, and hoping and praying that we're not going to have to give all the money back for camp. We also keep close to us the consideration and support for Pantachino Productions, who rents our facility for their, their performances as well as runs our theater camp. If they were to go under, that would be a huge blow to us as well as to the community at large. So we have a lot of moving parts that we're all trying to pay attention to and support and keep the arts alive in Milford, which I know they're not going to go anywhere, so.
Absolutely. And thank you for that, Paige. And as you know, the Milford Arts Council has my full support. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any more aldermen that have any more questions for the Milford Arts Council? Hearing none. Thank you, Paige, and thank you for all the good work you do for the city and all.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for your continued support.
Have a good night. At this point, the next department organization on our agenda is the Transit District, page 89. Henry Jadak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Good evening.
Good evening. First, I'd like to let everyone know what we've been doing recently. The district's been operating throughout the pandemic on a very limited basis for the door-to-door vans, the ADA vans, the elderly vans, with full service on the fixed routes. Fixed route services are averaging about 450 trips a day, which is about half of what we normally do, which includes the local fixed routes, the coastal link that goes from Milford to Norwalk. Customers on the, on the routes must enter through the rear, rear door, confining them to the rear of the bus, away from the driver, and are not required to pay a fare. But they are required to wear a mask or a covering of some type. At any one time, there's no more than 10 individuals on the bus. Our vehicles, offices, and the Milford Real Station are being sanitized every day. All these expenses that deal with the COVID virus, the loss of revenue from the services, the cost of furloughing employees will, will be reimbursed through the recently passed CARES Act, Federal CARES Act, which we're in the process of making application for. So we're very fortunate in that respect. Major projects we hope to complete in the upcoming fiscal include three bus shelters, two downtown, one in front of the Chamber of Commerce, the other across from Webster Bank, and one in Devon, right near the Washington Bridge. There's existing shelter there that needs to be replaced. Also to replace for 35-foot fixed route buses for our local fixed route service. The increase of $10,000 that I requested the budget was expected to pay for contractual increases for the unionized drivers and for increased healthcare costs. We certainly realize the situation and that everyone's trying to keep the budget level, which we certainly would agree with, but wanted to express that we certainly could use the money for that purpose. The city grant is very, very important to us because it helps us to match other grants and shows the state and the Department of Transportation the support, the great support that the, the city gives to the public transportation system in Milford. That's, that's all a very short statement, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Henry, for that presentation. Any aldermen have any questions for the Transit District? Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Jadash. Mr. Jadash, you mentioned that you are on a abbreviated schedule now. Two quick things. How is the new schedule determined? I mean, do you sit down with the committee as far as what the new, what routes are going to be handled? Is it based on frequency of use and the destination points? And secondly, how long has it been that you don't take fares?
It's been, on the fare issue, that's been a little over a month now. That was dictated by the state. They were anticipating being able to make up for the, the loss of fares. The idea was to keep the people away from the, as far from the driver as possible because the, the close interaction there was certainly, could be a hazard. But as it turns out, with the initiation of the CARES Act, there are provisions there to recover lost revenue. So instead of the state making up the lost revenue, the, the federal government will make it up at 100%. As far as the routes are concerned, the fixed routes are all the same. There's no change in the fixed routes at all. That's also been more or less dictated by the state of Connecticut. The local fixed routes are seriously down. Coastal Link is, is not as, down as much. We're certainly, the passengers are mainly essential workers or people that need to go shopping and things of that nature. In the van services, it's just a question of people, the requests that we receive. If we received more requests that were, that were, that were needed, essential, we'd certainly do them. But we're only doing about 10%, 15% of the rides that we would normally do because the need is, the calls aren't there. They're not going to the hairdresser. They're not going shopping as much. It's just mainly for kidney dialysis and the cancer treatment. So that, that's, that the calls dictate how much the vans are used, and all the routes are in place the same as they would be any other day.
What's your staffing situation? Is anyone, any of your drivers or staff been furloughed during this?
We haven't, we haven't 100% furloughed anyone yet or had any layoffs yet because we've been able to rotate the drivers through to get a certain number of hours. And also, many of them are also doing shifts sanitizing the vehicles, which works out very, which is working out very good right now. So we're able to ensure the vehicles are sanitized completely every day. That takes some time and not having to lay anybody off and be able to use the furlough issue to supplement what we can't give them in hours.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Jadash. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Aldermen that have any more questions for the Transit District? Hearing done. Thank you, Henry, for your presentation and for answering all our questions. At this point, the next department organization on our agenda is for the Borough of Woodmont, page 88. Warden Ed Bonessi is up. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Strange times we're in.
Yes, it is.
Ed Bonessi, Borough of Woodmont, Warden. Our request this year, I think you have my ID1, BR1, same as last year. We've done a tremendous amount of road paving in the last five years. We're extremely happy with the relationship that we have forged with Public Works Department, taking advantage of the state contracts, or allowing us to pave more roads with less money than we have probably in, in the last 15 or 20 years. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ed, for that presentation. Is there any aldermen that have any questions for the Borough of Woodmont? I see no questions. Thank you, Ed, again, and thank you for all the work you do for the Borough of Woodmont. We'll see you soon.
Thank you for everything you do and the whole board.
Have a good evening. The next department organization on our agenda is the Law Department on page 24. Jonathan Burchard. Good evening, John.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Board.
Look at that beautiful dog.
Yeah, it's better looking than me. That's why you get to picture the dog. As you can see, nothing's really changed from my budget from last year. So I, I think there's only a couple of changes and their reductions. So I think there's only a couple of changes in their reductions in other legal fees and miscellaneous professional fees and services. But that's about it. The wages remain the same because the Town Hall Union contract expired in June of 19, so that contract remains open and we're operating under those terms and conditions of the existing contract. But operational expenses remain the same. And that's about it. If anyone has any questions, be happy to answer them. The best of my abilities.
Thank you, John, for your presentation. Is there any Aldermen that have any questions for the Law Department? I guess everyone knows everything that's going on in the Law Department. Thank you, John. You have a good evening and thank you for all the good work you do for the city.
Thank you.
The next department organization on our agenda is the Mayor's Office, page 17. Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, or good evening, Mr. Chairman. It's been a long evening so far, but as Warden Bonessi said, these are interesting times. These are extraordinary times. These are the type of times that test men's souls and women's souls, as they say in literature. But we are doing our best. Our whole community has been coming together. All the people that work for the City of Milford have really stepped up to make sure that we are a united front and that even though we are staying apart, at least physically six feet apart, we are still a town, a city, that continues to come together to help each other and to support one another. So that being said, we found ourselves in difficult times over the course of this budget, which really starts in October when I meet with the department heads for the first time, and then we reconvene again in earnest on an individual basis in December, and we meet and go through each of the different department budgets and agency budgets. And then we take another look, Peter and I, and then we circle back with each of the department heads, usually before or immediately after I put out our budget in January. But there are several cost drivers included in this budget. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we do have some favorable financial news that just came out from our healthcare consultants. But overall, this is going to be a difficult year because this pandemic, this worldwide health issue, has really had a worldwide effect on our economy that has not spared any hamlet or community or town or city. This is going to be something that we have to brace for for the next year. We've had people that have lost their jobs. We've had people that have been furloughed and led off and fired because of the pandemic. And these are tough, these are difficult, these are rough financial times. It is our duty to balance the needs of the city, to make sure that we have fantastic city services, to make sure that our roads are paved and that our libraries are stocked and that our neighborhoods are safe and that those restaurants that we go and eat in or take out from are safe and sanitary and that our educational system is one that's thriving. But at the same time, we do have to balance all of those services with the ability to pay by our taxpayers and our residents, who right now, more than ever, are experiencing a lot of financial hardships, or at least a good portion of those residents right now, who find themselves out of work, who find themselves financially less well up than they were a month and a half ago. So those are some of the things that we are working with in this 2020, 2021 budget. We don't know exactly what is going to happen over the course of the next six to 12 months. We are working with our Health Department, our Health Director, who has been fantastic to try to gauge the best way that we can, utilizing the best information and the best expert advice that we have available. But there is still some speculation. All budgets are, to some degree, a bit of speculation, but we are using our best judgments to make sure that we plan appropriately for next year. So there has been some adjustments over the course of the last four or five months that we've been working on this budget. And I know that you folks are digging in and sharpening your pencils. And if we do ultimately adopt this budget next week or within the next couple of weeks, I do know that we will probably have to come back to your board over the course of the next six months to a year to further refine through some type of budget memo transfer or allocation transfer because there is a lot of things that we just can't plan for, probably more than I've ever experienced before, given these strange times. So with that, happy to answer any questions about either the Mayor's Budget, which is relatively flat, or the General Expenses Budget, which is the next item on the agenda for this evening.
I don't have a question at this time, Mr. Mayor, but I just want to compliment you and your staff and the Health Department, as well as the Police and Fire Department. It makes you proud to be a resident of Milford. You're keeping everyone, as much as possible, informed about what's going on with this craziness, and we're all looking forward to getting back to our regular way of life. So we appreciate what you're doing to keep us going while waiting for that time to come about. Any questions from other Aldermen? Alderman Vitale.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, through you to the Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Having heard everything you just got through saying and the situation that we're in and many departments might be revisiting us again in the spring or whatever the situation may be. Under normal negotiations with contracts, I don't think there's anything, any contractual agreement that might exceed 2% to 3% on an annual basis. I would just like to know how you justify a almost 9% increase in salary, which represents about $6,000 increase in the Chief of Staff, after all the conditions and all we go through and keeping, trying to keep an austere budget and keeping the lid on, having Board of Finance making decisions in cutting arbitrarily, as far as I'm concerned, arbitrarily cutting some of these, some of the monies that were recommended by even you and the department. How do you justify $1,000 increase to that position?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale. Last year, the Board, based on a recommendation, did change the job description of the Chief of Staff from an administrative assistant to a Chief of Staff position with your job duties and responsibilities. As we reviewed last year, Milford is still, in terms of the Mayor's Office or the City Manager, Town Manager's Office, is well below any of the like communities, certainly the surrounding communities. We used Stratford and West Haven as an example of the type of office support that those towns have. But again, other towns that are of similar size, similar complexity, we have a lot fewer people in the Mayor's Office. We don't have CAOs, Chief Administrative Officers, or Deputy Chief Administrative Officers, or Constituent Service Directors, all of which make well into the six figures in other surrounding communities. Other towns, again, West Haven and Stratford, have not just a Chief of Staff, but a Deputy Chief of Staff also that makes well into the six figures. So last year, this Board did adjust the position and made it a Chief of Staff position at the same level as the Assistant Public Works position. Just like the Assistant Public Works, there are three steps. There is a step increase for only three different periods of time over the course, and then it maxes out. If you look back at all of the different departments that you have reviewed so far, I think that the Mayor's Office is the last department on our list after the entire deliberation process. All of those different departments did have positions which included not just the wage adjustment through contractual negotiations, but also those positions that were eligible had step increases. We did not adjust any of those citywide across all the departments. So consistent with that, those are all things that were bargained for or negotiated for or contracted for. That's not something that HR got involved with or the city has gotten involved with. So I guess that's the rationale, Alderman Vitale.
Again, you know, I'm sorry.
Well below any of the like communities for which we do have a Chief of Staff position, all of which, that I'm aware, make well into the six figures, and this is not that.
Having said that and making a comparison to other communities, we also heard that with the Police Department, that, you know, our department's on parity of other cities and our size, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And we insisted that they tighten their belts. I think the Chief of Staff works at the will of the Mayor. The fact remains that there's no bargaining agent that that staff, that position is in as far as a negotiating piece, except with you, obviously. So I take great offense to the point where somebody can get in, it's not Justin, Justin does a great job, it's Chief of Staff position. The fact is that 6% increase, or 9% increase to over $6,000, while we're asking, everybody else is tightening their belts, it doesn't seem as though that's happening at your particular place, your place of business. So for that, you know, I have a resounding vote of no to that, but it's not going to make a difference because I think we all need to know that other departments are tightening their belts, or are all asking parity with other situations in other towns, which totally went to death ears as far as the Board of Finance is concerned. So again, this was also recommended by the Board of Finance, so where they can make arbitrary decisions on other situations, I don't know why they didn't make any, give any justifications as to why that position should be held with that type of salary. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alderman, Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I do have similar questions that Alderman Vitale does. When we heard from Public Works and the Chief of Police and many of the other departments and personnel that we heard from throughout the discussions regarding this budget, we see Public Works having to let people go. They had to fire a couple of their employees. We see the Chief of Police saying they don't have enough cruisers. They don't have enough weapons that they need. And all the Aldermen do understand reasonable pay increases, contractual or otherwise. But when there are employees getting fired and chiefs indicating that they don't have all the equipment that they need, I think it would be incumbent upon the Mayor's Office to look at that situation and say, let's follow suit. If the other departments have been asked to roll some things back or make certain cuts to certain areas of their department, I think it would be reasonable for the Mayor's Office to do that as well.
Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, I take great exception at the fact that there are people being fired. There is no one being fired. There has not been a single person in the city that has been fired as part of this budget. There were some jobs openings, some positions that threw attrition because we've found new technologies over the course of the last five years that they were reduced. But there's no one in the Public Works Department, no one in any positions across the city that we're firing an employee. This is consistent with the entire swath of the budget. You know, there are step increases of similar amounts in the Police Department. There are step increases of similar amounts in the Public Works Department. There are similar step increases in salary adjustments across the city, all of the departments. This is consistent with that. The Mayor's Office, as you'll note, has reductions in the operational expenses in the Personal Services Section, so it's consistent with all the other departments. I know that because it is a political department to some degree, because my position is an elected one, it's easy to pick on, but it is consistent with all of the other departments. It is a small department. It does not have the same flexibility that some of the other departments have, but in terms of being consistent with all of the other departments in terms of salary increases and step increases and adjustments, it is identical, if not, you know, more so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I hear everything that you just said. I just feel as though if we're going to go to, you know, just take, for example, the Police Department and ask them to make certain cuts to their budget or not ask for certain equipment or things like that, I just think it would be reasonable for the Mayor's Office to.
And again, Mr. Chairman, through you, there were reductions to the Mayor's Office, there were reductions to almost all of the different departmental budgets. We tried to be consistent in terms of ensuring that each of the departments, including the Mayor's Office, including the Mayor's Department head, reductions in personal services and operational expenses. Again, it's a small department, but there was reductions from the Board of Finance.
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Any more Aldermen have any questions pertaining to the Mayor's Office? Alderman Sutton. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the Board and to the Mayor. I actually want to echo one of the points that Alderman Vitale made. I believe Mr. Rosen is doing a great job, and I think he is very deserving of the line item that is placed in this budget. I think all of the Aldermen would agree with me that the communication that Justin Rosen has been able to facilitate from the Mayor's Office to the Board, particularly over the last year, plus that he's been in his current position, has been clearer, quicker, more concise than we've ever had the opportunity to have before. I think the Mayor made an excellent point in saying that individuals that hold similar positions in other municipalities make into the six figures. I'd almost say there's a concern that people do realize and people will realize and should realize that Mr. Rosen does a very good job at what he does, and we run the risk of him being poached by another municipality. And I think to put him on this schedule to increase him by this step keeps him here, benefits the Board, and we're looking at a line item raise of about $6,000, which I don't think would hire us back a Public Works person or purchase anything of, you know, immediate substance or change to the Police Department budget. I think it's a very valid expenditure, and I wholeheartedly endorse it.
Alderman Harlan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the Mayor. Mayor Blake, I just want to thank you again for clarifying that point. I took slight offense to that comment as well of folks being fired from Public Works, which was a complete inaccuracy. Be careful what we say and how we say it because it is public record. Number two, to Alderman Sutton, I agree, whether it's Justin or whomever else, it's a position that's probably incredibly underpaid, and Justin does a tremendous job for all of us in communication and what he does and how he responds to us. So I would just want to go on record and say that I do support the pay raise for Justin for that position, and that's it. Thank you. Back to you, sir.
Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do respect and acknowledge-
I do respect and acknowledge the fact that somebody said if it's an elected position, it's always difficult to justify any change. And although Justin's is not, the Chief of Staff is not an elected position, it is the, it is a indispensable part of the day-to-day operations of the Mayor's Office. You know, we're a legislative ascendant by charter. The Board of Aldermen holds the power, but the fact of the matter is we are all volunteers. Most of the day-to-day business of the city of Milford is conducted through the, the Mayor's Office. And similar towns, because we've had this discussion before of similar demographics and population, have a much bigger chief executive office in terms of expense and staffing. I marvel at the amount of work and public relations and day-to-day administrative tasks that the Mayor used to take on alone and with help from the Assistant Mayor at the time. But I think the addition of the Chief of Staff position has made an enormous difference in terms of efficiencies within that office with, with communications with the public at large and communications between each of the city departments. Everyone has already remarked at the exemplary job that Justin has done for the city and for the Mayor's Office in terms of streamlining things, in terms of getting communications going between departments, resolving problems and setting up sometimes the very meetings that we're, we're participating in now. So I do understand the fact that, and parity with other towns, this is still a very good, a very good use of, of public money in order to have a Chief of Staff in the full capacity of that position. I think you do, as we've said before, separate the job from the individual. But more than once at these budget hearings, I've had to defend the individual because the individual has made that position much more valuable than it would be on paper. And I think that's the case here. And I think the Mayor's right to, to want that for the city and for his office. And I think we're right to, to have Justin in that position doing the work that he does. And I support the budget item as, as approved by the Finance Board.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Is there any other aldermen have any more questions for the Mayor's Office? Hearing none. The next. Alderman Janatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I just threw you to the Mayor, just for a little more clarification. So you mentioned this is a three-step position. So this increase puts this position at the second step. Is that, is that accurate?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Janatasio. Yes, some, some positions in the city have three steps, some have five steps. This is a, a three-step position. So this is the, the second step. This will, this will match at the same grade level as the Assistant Public Works Director. So that position, that's probably at the max step, but that maxes out at, at that position.
So, so potentially this position will have another increase at some point. And when would that be? Would that be, is that through, through the contract? How does that work? Like, when can we expect another increase from this position?
That's through the salary ordinance that you folks, the U2 ordinance that you folks approve. So that would be the third step.
Right. But when does the third step take place? Is it two years from now? Because I, I think what's problematic here is the fact that the position was just created, okay? As you mentioned, by the Board, through, through ordinance. And here we are already going into the second step. Is that just, is that just luck for, for the person that's in this position? Or was that being because it, it tandems the Public Works position as far as when the steps come due, so to speak?
Mr. Chairman, through you, this is the exact same step program. This follows all of the collective bargaining agreements. It's the same, whether it's one year, two year, three year, four year, five year or one year, two year, three year, it's the same methodology as all of the other employees in the city of Milford. I know that we're targeting this because it's connected to a department that's elected as opposed to any of the other departments throughout the city. And it's, it's easy to pick on, but this is the exact same mechanism that we use for every other city employee, whether it's a non-represented or represented, you know, through one of the different collective bargaining agencies. This is the same step process that all of those follow.
I, I understand, Mr. Mayor. I'm just not clear with the process, I guess. I'm just looking for a little more clarification. In other words, when, when are these steps, when are these increases due? Is that just at specific times? That's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Again, it's, it's either on the anniversary or it's, some of the union agreements are a little bit different. It's either on the, the anniversary date or it's at the start of the fiscal year, as long as there was at least a one-year period for which the employee had worked prior to that.
Okay. With that being said, when's the next anniversary? I mean, what is this position going to max out on the third step? What's going to be the maximum that this position's going to pay when it becomes mature at its next anniversary? Is it going to be another 9% at that point? Do you, do you know?
I would direct you to look at the Assistant Public Works Director, which is maxed out. So it would be at that grade. And that's the, that's, that would be the max step.
And that salary would be, obviously would be in our book, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No further questions.
Any more questions from the aldermen under the Department of Mayor's Office? I see none. So we'll move on to the last department of this evening's General Expenses on page 19. Does there any aldermen have any questions pertaining to General Expenses? I, I see none. So at, at this point, I will entertain a motion to come out of recess. We have a, I'm sorry, we need to, we'll entertain a motion to recess until Wednesday, May 6th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recess until next Wednesday, May 6th at 7:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We're in recess.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. You also. Stay safe and stay healthy.
You too. Thanks, Phil.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.